I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Baggers in the building, I'm sure he'll be here shortly. Councilman Wilson?
Here.
And Council McKinnon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is absent today. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you again for this day. Father, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy, most of all. Father, we thank you for that salvation that comes only through you. Would pray, did you lead us, guide us, and direct us, Father, to do your business in accordance with your will and your way? Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to do so. We just ask your blessings on this city, this council administration, and again, may your will always be done. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Recreation Committee work session and the council meeting that was held September the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation.
Would Susan Shipman, Cliff Andrews, Eve Hamrick, and Erica Cottle come up, please? This proclamation is concerning domestic violence. Let it be known that the City of Gaston, Alabama acknowledges the prevalence of domestic violence in all of its wards. It is declared that domestic violence is a crime that will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law in the City of Gaston. It is also affirmed that this body does assist victims of domestic violence by supporting second chance through funding and promoting its shelter programs and services. It recognizes second chance for its work in providing the safe shelter, supportive services, court advocacy, transitional housing, educational outreach, prevention education for domestic violence victims fleeing abusive situations in the Gaston area. The city resolved to reduce the increase incidence of domestic violence by promoting awareness of the issues of safe shelter and services provided by second chance. Therefore, I, Sherman Gaitan, the Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city to be observed and promoted throughout our city.
We thank you for this. We are aware of domestic violence year-round, but October is the month that we invite our communities to become a part of what we're doing, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here today and for the proclamation. We know that one in four women and one in seven men will be victims of domestic violence in their lifetime, so you know someone who's either in a domestic violence situation, has been, or will be in the future. So it's important that we all realize that and reach out to people who need our assistance.
Is Detective Clark Thompson here? Could you come up, please? Have a commendation. Detective Thompson, you might have read in the paper. I will let him tell you a little more about it because he's a lot smarter than I am about all that stuff. But there was somebody committing some fraud through transfers of money, and they were about to lose all their money they were trying to buy a house for, and when they called the police, he went down, and as soon as he found out, he knew right where to go to get it stopped, it had already come out of state. I'll let you talk a little bit. Great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Fortunate enough to work at a really good department with really good men and women here at the Gaston Police Department, our Detective Division. My supervisors put me in a situation where we're able to come in contact, have good resources with the federal government, and they kind of helped me, kind of steered me in the way I should go as far as trying to get this money back. But essentially, what happened was is they wired money to an account up in New York, and once you hit that enter button, that money's gone, it's not coming back. So we were able to get some contacts up at Bank of America up in New York and get that money seized and get that money back to them. We're very fortunate because this money was wired to like a mule account. We're very fortunate that the funds were there by the time we got the assets froze and seized, so we were very fortunate in that regard. But I guess that's about it.
The paper said it was $50,000.
Yes, ma'am.
It was a scam, so all you grandparents, that includes me, when they tell you your son is in an accident, you need to check that out first.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Also, Thompson, I think the one thing that really needs to be highlighted is your response.
That's right.
There were a number of people who got a call from these impacted folks and had an opportunity to support them, but you were the one who stepped up and made it your business to ensure that it got escalated properly and got into the right hands and that they were able to realize a positive outcome. So I think that's, you know, you should be commended for that, for sure.
Very good. We have two items on unfinished business, and this is a resolution on nuisance of abatement on property at 411 Allen Street in District 1, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on August the 27th. What is the pleasure of the council? I move to abate. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1904 Adams Street in District 5, and this resolution was tabled for 30 days on August the 27th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, it's my understanding that there's been no activity on this property, so I'd like to move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say for both of the two items, if you all would notice that they were tabled for 30 days, admit that the people came and told us that they were going to do this or they were going to do that as far as upgrading the property, and nothing was ever done. And so this is why we sometime just go ahead and abate property because we know that some are not going to do what they say they're going to do. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing donation of traffic lights to the City of Selma, and this declares 18 historic traffic lights with no longer needed by the city to be surplus property and donated to the City of Selma. The city will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just for further clarification, I want to make it clear that we're not just giving away traffic lights to other cities. These are older traffic lights that were taken down years ago that have been in storage for, I think, close to 20 years now, and we are donating a portion of them to the City of Selma, who is undergoing a historic revitalization program in their downtown, and we still actually have enough of these historic traffic lights left over if we ever, if and when we choose to expand our historic downtown district to include Chestnut and Walnut and Locusts. So we're keeping the amount of lights that we need to continue that motif and that design of our downtown, but these are excess and they need them for a good project.
The exact number that we've got was 35. We're giving Selma, I mean, yeah, we're giving them.
18.
18, we'll have 17 left through our project with.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing application of a grant from a DECA, and this is for funding the Alabama Council's 2020 Census Grant Program for Census Outreach Activities, and the amount is $10,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is first reading, and this is an ordinance amending the City Code regarding council members' travel expenditure tools. This amends Section 2-5 to clear up a conflict with Section 2-343G of the City Code, and this ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next item is an item authorizing conveyance, and this conveys 0.47 acres of a surplus right of way along College Parkway to Cook's Food, and this ordinance is presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
I have one, Madam Chairman. Please, the council, this is an ordinance number 512 requested by the city clerk. This is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of the old East Gaston Fire Station to Steve Lambert.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business and its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Madam, I think we should say something about that.
This is in District 4. It's the East Gaston Fire Station located close to, I guess, 8th Street, right over in that area over there. There's been some discussion in the past about historic buildings and things of that nature that are in Gaston that are either in neglect or just falling apart. Steve Lambert is a graduate of Gaston High School, grew up in East Gaston, lives in Birmingham, and has come forward, and he wants to restore it. He has a great vision that he shared with us to really invest a lot of money into this to get it on the National Historic Register, which is very difficult to do and very expensive. He's doing this with his own money, of course. He has a 1931 fire truck that's been restored, and I think a 1936 to '37, excuse me, motorcycle, and that same era police car that he wants to locate in there, and I think the vision's going to center around maybe like a museum of sorts for that fire station. So very grateful for him to return home and to come to Gaston and to put this kind of an investment. This will be a large investment in that structure. It's got to have a new roof because that roof is not the original roof, and in order to be on the National Historic Register, you have to have, everything has to be in an original state. So I think this is going to be very good for the city. Per our attorney and through Shane Ellison, the city is protected on the backside down the road in case of any kind of change of heart or change of ownership. We will be well taken care of in that regard. We'll have the ability to have first right of refusal. So he said he'll get right on it once he gets started. First thing is to get it on the National Historic Register, so just stay tuned for that. I'm sure there'll be a lot of interest, and I'm sure it'll be in the local media. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is department reports, committee boards.
Madam President and Councilman, Mayor, first of all, I'd like to say, Ray and I, from the museum and the library here, are members of the Etowah County Bicentennial Committee, so we're representing that committee here today and coming forward before you. And we have some exciting news that it's Alabama's 200th birthday. I'm sure all of you have seen announcements on television, many events around the state. The actual birthday is going to be December 14th. There'll be a big celebration down in Montgomery, parade, big concert, and all that. But in anticipation of that, there's a big traveling exhibit. It's called Making Alabama, and it's Alabama's history, from ancient times all the way up to the present day. We requested that exhibit come into Gaston as close to the birthday, the actual birthday, as possible. We couldn't get it in December because it'll be at the State House. Asked for November, and Huntsville beat us out, and so October, we have it. And it's coming in. It'll be at the Gaston Museum of Art and History. We are waiting for the truck right now to arrive, then we'll be assembling it. It'll be on the first floor at the museum, and we will have a ribbon cutting, grand opening ceremony at First Friday at 6:00, and all of you are invited to join us for that ribbon cutting. We'd appreciate your attendance. In regard to that, we also have some kind of cool things to go along with. We've got three authors, Alabama authors, that'll be joining us Friday night. One is John Dersham. He has a photography book that's really cool. Another gentleman by the name of Tim Bun, he's a historian and knows a lot about early Alabama history. And then a third gentleman, Julian McPhillips, he is an attorney down in Montgomery, all involved with the Civil Rights Movement and was on many cases during the Civil Rights Period. So those three will be joining us, and they have their books available for sale and purchase. And Ray also has authorized a couple of posters that some artists have done. Those posters will be for sale. One's about the state history and the other's about Etowah County's history. Lastly, Ray has been hard at work, he and his staff, on the third floor of the museum, putting together an excellent Etowah County timeline, a historical timeline, and Ray's going to be opening that on Friday night as well. So it parlay's well with the state exhibit coming in, and then we'll have our own historical timeline up on the third floor. So if all of you could join us Friday night, of course, it'll be busy with First Friday, but the ribbon cutting's at 6:00. We'll see you there.
Craig, what I'd like to say before you step away is, you know, thank you for the tasteful nature in which this was pulled together, and you know what I'm talking about.
I do, yeah.
And I want to thank you in front of the world. I'm really pleased with that.
Ray deserves the, most of the credit for that. I got involved with some editing work, but he and his staff deserve that credit. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're sitting down, I'd like to just say, this book I've got here from you, it said in 1846, Gaston Police Department was formed, Thomas Burgess became the first sheriff, and when we established Etowah County in '67, Samuel Dillard was the sheriff there. He was the only gun in town, bitch, so you might remember that. We had one gun in town in 1867.
Okay, we have two citizen requests. We have Joseph Cole. If you'll come, give your name.
Good morning. Does everyone know my name is Joseph Cole? I'm here today to speak on gun violence, and we know there's quite a bit of gun violence going on in this country, and also we have some here in this city. And one of the major problems, I think, is the access of guns. You have even teenagers now. Everybody just have guns, and people have no regard for life. People get into an argument, first thing they do is reach for a pistol and just to cause harm. I don't think they love themselves, they love others either. And I don't really have the answer to it, but I really wanted to delve in on this subject because on Thursday night of last week, I was with some friends watching a good football game, and I got a call from one of the citizens of Gaston to tell me that a black female and a white female, a black female and a black male had a, was in a confrontation with some police officers. So, you know, I really didn't want to hear this because I was in the game, but I told the individual that I would make a call, and I ended up speaking to the shift commander who went out, and it was in Sampson Housing, her area. But I do want to, at this time, commend two police officers, Sergeant Eric Phillips, who was on the scene, and Lieutenant Josh Russell, who was the commander of that shift. There was a black male there with a female, and they approached him, and they told him to raise his hand. He only raised one hand and had the other one down, and he told him he had a pistol. So they once again told him to raise his hand. Now, this was a very dangerous situation because this is at night. It was probably around 9:00 Alabama time, it was about 10:00 in Atlanta, but they handled it so, they really handled it well. They got him to a point that they was able to put him in cuffs, handcuffs. I spoke to Sergeant Phillips, that's the reason I know the details of this, and he said he had to send a marijuana on him, but they did not arrest him. And what gets me about this situation is, this is a dangerous time, guns all around, and these policemen, and they go out, their lives really are in danger because you don't know what the situation is. This had been in some other place we seen on the news, somebody would have been shot, seriously hurt, or more so that night, the black male or either the police officers. But the way they handled this, I really want to commend them. And I want people to know, and I want this on the record, I'm not anti-police, I'm not anti-law enforcement, and we have a good chief here, we have good officers, and I do have confidence in them because all of my interaction with them, they have been straight up, they've been honest. We disagree at times, but everybody gonna disagree. But as far as doing the work when needs to be done, I want to commend them. And I also want the citizen in this city to know that I'm not a police officer. If something happened, I'm in Atlanta, what can I do? And even if I was here, I couldn't do anything because I'm not a police officer. Ask for the shift, the person who's in charge of the shift. If you have an issue, I'm sure they will address it. Now, I'm going to address issues that they come up, but I'm not going to be jumping on the police and anyone else. As you know, I have been an advocate for the police, and I have been here in town when I thought they did not do what they supposed to do. But I wanted to mention this because we could have had a very serious matter that would have made the newspaper. See what these people did, nobody know it because nobody talked about it, but I do, and I just want to commend them on that. And I do want to say two other things, Madam President, before I sit down. The AACP has, the President, Ms. Spearman, they have a list, 10 items, that if anyone confronts the police, if you follow these items, these items can help you save your life. We don't need to be, when the police stop you, if they tell you, give their license, give your name, you're not supposed to be getting in verbal confrontation with the police. They only doing their job, and that goes for me and everyone else. So I just wanted to be known that we need to do something about the guns, and of course, the officials in the city do not take any of my suggestions or ideas, but I would ask this esteemed council and the esteemed mayor to consider and adopt doing a gun buyout. Just, you know, back, as they said, purchase gun, if you can get one off the street, that's one less than what you have. So I think that's something that you might want to consider doing. I'm not saying it's going to do any good, but it could not hurt because it's gun violence, it affects everybody. But I just really, once again, want to commend these officers because that was really a dangerous situation, and somebody could have lost their life. Thank you.
I'd like to say good morning to Madam Toles and Mayor Gaitan and our city council and our community stakeholders. Good morning. My name is Derek Austin, and I'm a local pharmacist minister and also chair of Boys and Girls Club of Gaston, Etowah County. We stand before you this morning asking that you give a listening ear to some numbers that we would like to present as it relates to Boys and Girls Club, that we believe are relevant to the Boys and Girls Club, and then we also believe they hold relevance as it relates to our community as a whole. Some of the, and the one number, I better be sure that I adhere to the preacher part of me. The council has asked me to be a good steward of their time. I think I've been given a certain amount of time, so I'm gonna try to get all this in expeditiously. But the numbers as it relates to the Boys and Girls Club is that, and we have a handout that we provided at council meeting, pre-council meeting. As it relates to the students that attend Boys and Girls Club, what we call our Power Hour, we have 80% of those students that are on honor roll. Of those students that attend Power Hour, we have 0% pregnancy rate. And additionally, we feed about 53 students on a daily basis, and that's in collaboration with the program with our local city school system. As of late, some of the fundraising activities that we've had, we were able to raise $6,000 from a professional cornhole tournament. Additional funding that we've received, we've actually received about $3,500 to date over the past 90 days from our council. We have 100% promotion rate of all the kids that attend the Power Hour. On a monthly basis, we service anywhere from about 1,400 to 1,800 students through various programs, including our STEM program, after-school program, and things of that nature. And of that 1,700, 1,800 students, about 88% of them are actual Gaston residents. Next number is the number 10. 10 represents the number of our current board makeup. It's made up of about 10 individuals. We realize that Gaston is a small, or, community, and one of the things we want to really emphasize is even though that number is 10 right now, that represents a very, very, we believe to be diverse board that can really add to stability of our current boards and Boys and Girls Club, to be assured of the requests that we're gonna make a little bit later on. And one, even though we have 10 board members, there's one vision, and that one vision is to impact our community in a positive way. So our ask is this, our 2018, 2019 budget, we're actually budgeted for about $262,000. Our expenses to date are right in line with what we budgeted. However, we've experienced, or we are experiencing and are projecting about a $16,000, $18,000 shortfall over the next six months. So what we're asking, our request is to the board, I'm sorry, the council, is for about a $40,000 infusion, a one-time infusion of cash. The way that this infusion of cash will be utilized is to help assist with that projected shortfall. Over the past 60 days, we also experienced some transition in terms of our executive director, so those funds will also be used to assist with a CEO search as well as adding additional staffing to help stabilize those programs that we believe will be very, very impactful to our community. And lastly, we'd like to be sure that we do some things to continue the maintenance of our current facility. Because the city is, was so gracious to donate and provide to our local Boys and Girls Club a very, very wonderful facility. And we want to thank the mayor and the Public Works Department for that donation. And anytime when you have something nice, or when you're looking at the fact that we service about fourteen, eighteen hundred kids, or young people a month, there's gonna be a certain amount of wear and tear on the facility. And because of not only where we are, but where we desire to go with this vision of the Boys and Girls Club of Gadsden, Etowah County, we believe it's important for our facilities to be, continue to be top rate. And I've had opportunities since I've been on the Boys and Girls Club of Gadsden, Etowah County, to survey and, and look at other Boys and Girls Club across the state. And I want us to know as Gadsden residents, that our local Gadsden, Etowah County Board is second to none. And so, it's important to us to be sure that we have a financial wherewithal to continue the maintenance of those facilities, be sure that they're safe facilities. Be sure from time to time, we can actually paint walls and things like that. Because you'll have an occasional towel that might mark on the wall and things like that. We want to be sure that they are aesthetically pleasing. And lastly, as far as it relates to facilities, we'd like to be able to do some landscaping to be sure that you can judge this book by its cover. Because we want you, we want to be very, very welcoming and inviting to come in. And the last thing we would like to mention is one. On the handout that we provided in pre-council meeting earlier today, we highlighted one young man. His name is Taurus Wilson. He was our youth of the year for the Gadsden, Etowah Boys and Girls Club. And he participated in a contest, or oratorical contest in Montgomery. And he was one of the finalists. The significance of that number one is, we want you to know, as board chair in our current board, that we would be very, very good stewards over that infusion of cash. And if we can just impact one, one, we believe that the return on an investment of this $40,000 will not only impact the Boys and Girls Club, but also our community at large. Because the one that we reach and impact, it prevents potentially that teenage pregnancy, it prevents that young man, a young woman being incarcerated in those dollars, community that we spend anyway. So, we would ask that you very strongly consider our request of $40,000 for a one-time infusion of cash. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have remarks. Mayor and council, Mayor Guy.
I just like to say, in case you didn't realize it, things are moving along on the river. We had the Buffalo Wild Wings over there. It was an unbelievable crowd. And there's more to come. They loved it here, they couldn't get over. Of course, I told the guy, this is Eat Out, Capital of the South. And he'll, he'll agree with me. But had a big turnout, and there's gonna be a lot more things coming on the east side over there. We want to keep moving along like we're doing. We're getting a lot of hits from different places, different companies, different stores. So, you know, just stay tuned, and maybe we'll have some, some more good news pretty soon.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, and I'll echo the mayor's point about the activity, from an economic development and a commercial development perspective. It's important to know that those things don't happen by accident. And they don't always happen simply because there's a commercial entity that's interested in us. Quite the contrary. There are a lot of very busy people and very capable people behind the scenes that are moving to make those kinds of things happen. And many of them go through this process and don't ever get recognized for what they do and, and everything that they, they bring to the table. But, so, so as a, as a voter, first, I, I don't miss that. And, and don't miss what it means to cast my ballot, not just for somebody that, that maybe looks good, or, or that maybe strikes a chord at a particular moment. But I look long-term. I look obviously at somebody who can bring to the table a set of skills that can move the city forward. And that's important. And that's important. So again, I appreciate the mayor and appreciate this council for supporting all of that activity. Because it, you know, it, it, it comes through a team effort, for sure. The only other thing I will add is, is again, I, I do want to echo in our appreciation for the Boys and Girls Club, for all the work that's been done. You know, you know, Mr. Austin, I know it's not, Derek, I know it's not easy to come up and ask for anything. But, but if you, if you've noticed, it's the, it's the board that's having to step before us and ask for that support. And, and there's a reason for that. And we appreciate you guys stepping up and being willing to do that. And I think you're gonna be overrun with, with support and, and a response at some level, whether it be from the city only, or whether it be from other areas of the community. You're, you're gonna get that support you need. So, so we ask that you just turn your focus to continuing to carry out that mission. And so that the city can be better served. And again, thank you for what you guys do. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Back.
All right. Want to let you folks in District Four know, we're gonna have district meetings like we did previously. I'm gonna have one October eighth, which I believe is next Tuesday, six o'clock at Yer Brown Elementary School. It's primarily for the people that live in Country Club and Clubview, but everyone is welcome. And then, I believe, I have a help me here, I think October seventeenth is the next one. And I think it's East Gadsden, you know, this is, I can't get out too far in my memory. But, and then the last one is October twenty-second, and that will be for the Edenwood area. You know, I have three distinct neighborhoods. I think it's wise to have three different meetings. And so, but everybody's welcome to come to every meeting, however they would wish to attend. I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for being here today and the work that you do. That's volunteer work, you guys on the board, it's, it's not easy to do. And you're, you're swimming uphill oftentimes. So thank you. And I echo Councilman Williams. We look forward to working with you guys. Also, I want to thank again Steve Lambert, who's not in the room. But Steve Lambert, you know, grew up in East Gadsden, left Gadsden, lived in Birmingham. I think he actually lives in O'No Island, which is down in Orange Beach area, but he works in Birmingham. And he wants to come home to Gadsden and invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in this city. Y'all, that's just fantastic. That is just great for somebody to have that kind of a desire. And to hear him talk about Gadsden is very refreshing. Okay? It's just real refreshing to hear an outsider come in and have really positive things to say. And I'm looking forward to, in the days, and weeks to come, to see what Steve does over there. Echo the mayor about Buffalo Wild Wings. I ate lunch there, and then I went back and ate supper. It was, both meals were just great. I got to talk again with Rick and Cindy, the owners that are from Nashville. Y'all, this guy came to get, he's been trying to find a location for three years. That's, that's called perseverance. That's how I got my wife. Perseverance, okay? So Steve and Cindy tried for three years, and then I think he got a call from the mayor's office, probably from Shane, saying, "We got you a spot right on the river." And you ought to hear them talk about Gadsden. You ought to hear their comments about what they see here, the downtown area, Nakalula Falls area, the potential. He sees potential. Steve Lambert sees potential. I think this mayor and this council see potential. Yeah, we got big challenges coming up, you know? And we don't have the, the pleasure of governing with emotions. We have to do it from a business standpoint, because that's what we're doing. Mayor Guyton runs a business. It's called the City of Gadsden. Fifty-two million dollar budget, six hundred plus employees, umpteen different departments, from public works to police and fire and everything in between. So we have to, we have to think before we speak, and, and we have to be diligent in what we do. This is real serious. Every one of us up here take this as real serious business. Has a lot of implications for the future. Got a daughter sitting out in the audience on the Boys and Girls Club, twenty-seven years old. She's gonna live here for another fifty, sixty years. So I, I take things serious about what we're doing in the city of Gadsden. You know, we, we don't sit up here and talk about things that are going on sometimes. We have an Industrial Development Authority that is, has a really good board. And they work in conjunction with all the cities in Etowah County, including our city and our mayor and our Economic Development Officer, Frankie Davis, and with Shane Ellison. Y'all, there is a lot going on, and there's a lot of hard, hard work going on in the city of Gadsden. We just can't tell everybody about it. It's just work that you can't openly discuss. But I hear that, you know, city leaders aren't doing anything. We're, I had somebody in big capital letters, "City leaders are doing nothing." That is so far from the truth. And it's just not right to let somebody go unabated with those kind of comments. So I'm publicly saying, there's a lot going on that not even the council knows. Because we're not privy to that information. If you know anything about running the government, or anything about industrial recruitment, it's all kept in a real tight concentric circle. Guess why? Because it has to be done that way. The potential investors and people will not come here if word leaks out that they're coming here. They have a lot of reasons for feeling that way. So we do know that there's, there's challenges. Everybody knows that. We, we, we live here. So just know that elected officials and leaders are working very hard to make this the best city that it can possibly be, and the best county that it can possibly be. I'm very proud to serve on this council. I'm very proud to live in Gadsden. I wouldn't live anywhere else. We've got the best people, and we've got the best city that, that, that there is. You talk to some people from Nashville, you talk to somebody from Birmingham and O'No Island, and get a different perspective. Sometimes you get too close to the forest, you can't see the trees. And it's so much fun just to say negative things. For some reason, that's a good human nature study. But everybody wants to kind of talk bad about things. Y'all, we've got so many good things going on here in, in, in this city. I'm so proud to be a part of it, and a, and a small part of it. And I encourage all of you, find someplace to volunteer. Find someplace, there's a lot of people that could use a lot of help. So get involved. Get involved and, and help make our city as, as, as the best city that it can be. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson.
Just making sure. Kirkland, I'll just tell you this, just for the record, your dad said you'd live fifty or sixty more years. With your earning potential and advancements in modern medicine, there's no reason believe you won't live another hundred, hundred and twenty years. Thank you to everybody who came out, excuse me, my district meeting last night. That was a lively one. Thank you to Brian Harbison and Mike Hilton for attending. There was a lot of passionate debates in the room, but we came out of there with some clear action plan and steps forward. And I think that's always important. I love to scream and holler at each other as much as anybody. I've been trying to get better at not doing that from this seat. But as long as we walk out of the room with a plan for how we're gonna move forward, and that happened last night, so thank you for all the citizens who showed up and voiced their opinions. I also want to give my, my acknowledgement and, and thoughts to the Tallahassee Fire Department and all of the firefighters that are fighting that blaze over there still to this, to this second. That was a tremendous call for resources from all around this community, and everybody responded greatly. Specifically, I want to point out Johnson's Giant Foods, who has a location in my district. I heard reports that they actually shut down their Tallahassee location late yesterday afternoon, and took all the food from their hot bar, and went over and fed the firefighters. They took water and Gatorade over there. So that's just to Councilman Back's point, that's the kind of community we have. And, and I want to say thank you to the supporters. You know, I find myself trying to address people who disagree with me a lot. And I, I always forget to say thank you to the literally hundreds of people who text me and email me and call me and tell me that I'm doing a great job and that they're proud of me. So I want y'all to know that I'm appreciative, and that gets me through a lot of tough afternoons when I'm questioning what I'm doing, or whether I'm doing something right. That support means a lot to me. And having members of this community that support organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, you know, it makes me proud to be from Gadsden, and it makes up for a lot of the dirty back and forth that you see in this process. So thank you to all of those supporters. Also, want to say special congratulations to Commander Joe Taylor from the Gadsden Fire Department. He retired yesterday with twenty-five years of service. So thank you for your service. And on a final note, I will say to Craig Scott and everybody involved with the bicentennial program. I've been involved with the state-level bicentennial program for almost five years now, actually almost six years. Jay Lamar, the director of the bicentennial program, reached out to me years ago. And as some of you may know, I own a craft brewery here in town. And so fittingly, at the beginning of this year, I was asked to write a toast to Alabama for their two-hundredth birthday. And the governor will read that in December at the celebration. And it was a real honor. And if you guys will allow me, I'm gonna read it for you right now, because I think it's pretty special. I literally wrote this on a bar napkin about five minutes before I was asked to give it the first time. So this is a toast to Alabama on its two-hundredth birthday. "For two hundred years, your farmers have grown the food that feeds the world, and your furnaces have produced the steel that built America. Your entrepreneurs have created millions of jobs, and your doctors have saved millions of lives. Your engineers designed the rockets that sent man to the heavens, and your port launched the vessels that defend our freedoms. Even the scars of your past have changed the social fabric of an entire nation. So here's the two hundred years of Southern grace with dirt on your feet, and here's the two hundred more, may they be just as sweet. Cheers." Thank you, Craig, for all you're doing.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I commend Larry Means, Mayor Larry Means over in Tallahassee for what he did to get all the fire departments here and, and the police departments that's all came. It's been a real, real job just trying to get all that took care of. And I know Larry was on top of it, and he's been out there ever since, trying to do what he could for them. And Tallahassee's really lucky to have Mayor Larry Means as their mayor over there. I want to say, I appreciate all the firemen that's over there, all the police officers over there, everybody that's volunteered. Because without all of them, it would've been a real mess over there, worse than it is right now. But I appreciate all of them. And I thank tonight, we need just to make sure, we pray for all these people that was up there working, the people that donated the food, the volunteers was there, and everybody just needs our prayers on that. I do want to say that Boys Club is in District Six, has been in District Six. I know since, I think about nineteen sixty-three or sixty-five. It started there on, at one time, it was on Twenty-Fourth and Megan Boulevard, right there on the corner. Basil Gilchrist was there then, and they moved, I'm thinking about sixty-four, sixty-five, down to Black Creek Road. I was a member down there when they first opened. Believe it or not, in seventy-three or seventy-four, I was athlete of the year down there. I never quit going to the Boys Club from when I started till I was about eighteen years old. I think the membership dues was in, I was telling somebody upstairs, it was a dollar a year. We had a, I wished I still had my little membership card. It had Boys Club on it, and it was in plastic and everything. So that thing would be a, a real memory to me if I still had that. But I do support the Boys and Girls Club down there, they do a real good job. And, you know, we can't let them fall by the wayside. Some way, we've got to offer some help, some way we can. But I think we're gonna work on doing that. Changing a little bit, on Wall Street, October eleventh, which is not this Friday, but next Friday, from five to eleven, we'll be closing the streets off. We'll have a gospel group down there singing. We'll have a country group singing. We have a rock group singing. They will be, all kind of vendors will be down there, selling hot dogs, hamburgers. And also, too, the Ritz Theater, we'll be putting on a performance that night also. I'm not sure how all that's gonna work together with all that bands in the theater trying to put on their play at the same time. But I guess we'll have to muffle through this this time to see how it goes. Also, October the twenty-fourth, that's on a Thursday night, from five to eight, we will close Wall Street completely down for the Treats on Wall Street, sponsored by the City of Gadsden, Etowah Baptist Association, and all the merchants on Wall Street. We're looking for around three thousand to five thousand kids that night. We'll be giving away candy. We've got twenty-two hundred hot dogs we're gonna give away. Start cooking hot dogs about twelve, and we end up about five. And if you don't get there by six, all them hot dogs will be gone, that candy will be gone. It's just, it's just a wonder how many people you'll see down there. You'll see your neighbors, you'll see your neighbors' kids, you'll see kids from all over this section of town, everywhere. The kids come from everywhere to this. It's been going on roughly around forty years, and I'm just thankful that the city of Gads is gonna be a part of it. And I appreciate the police and the fire department helping us out that night. Because without them, we couldn't put this on. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams said something we could sort of go about, sometime we let emotions come before facts. So to Councilman Wilson and Councilman Back, don't let your emotions get you about what people say, because if we're doing everything right, then that means that something is, if we're doing, if we're doing everything to please everybody, then that means we're doing something wrong somewhere. So you're not gonna have everybody that agreeing with you. And there's a poem, just a verse of it, that I say, "If you, if we can keep our heads about us, when everybody else is losing theirs and blaming it on us, then we'll be a good council." And so I just want to say that everybody has a thon in their flush. So you've got a thon, we've got a thon in our flush, so that means that we're doing something that's positive, because if not, the devil got us, and I don't intend for him to get me. Announcements Saturday from Parks and Recreation, there's gonna be a Halloween bash, super bash at Nakalula Falls from nine AM to five PM, and it's six dollars per person, four years and, four years and up. They're gonna have a double movie feature, it's gonna be Hotel Transylvania Two and Hocus Pocus. And also remember that along with this being Domestic Violence Month, this is also the beginning of Breast Cancer Month. And so let's remember those that have survived, and then there are those that haven't survived but support both of those affairs, breast cancer and domestic violence. If there's nothing else, I ask for a motion to adjourn.